We're not planning the fire exercise this evening, so if the alarm goes off, we'll assume it's real and make our way calmly and quietly down the stairs and gather in the car park. councillor Cook has just gone home momentarily to get his glasses, but we'll begin. So start off with public participation. Please keep it to three minutes. We have a lot to do on our agenda tonight. And the first person is Tracey Wilcox, coming to talk to us about the memorial tree and book. No. Okay. DJ, you, thank you.
I'm trying to keep it to three minutes.
Thank you.
A councillor from this town council has recently been on BBC and made a statement saying caravan dwellers are not welcome in Glastonbury. This would include Romani, Irish, Scottish, heritage, new age travellers, and anyone in between. I believe this to be deeply unethical and a breach of the Equality Act 2010 and the Human Rights Act 1998. Alongside all other ethnic groups, this protection extends to housing, education, healthcare and employment. They also have the right to freedom of peaceful assembly and association, and the right to peaceful enjoyment of their possessions. There are people on the field that do have Roma gypsy heritage and are protected under this legislation. The constant displacement, evictions every few months backs up this comment. The councillor then criminalised us using the words illegal encampment, when in fact it is an unauthorized encampment. This sparked off comments on local social media groups, pitchfork rebellion style comments saying all sorts of hateful and violent content. It is no longer safe to be roadside in Glastonbury. And another eviction with more caravans roadside will create the illusion of more caravan dwellers coming to the town, when it is in fact the same number of people in the town, just in another location. This is pushing an agenda to create more violence and threatening behaviour towards non bricks mortar people. The housing crisis is about to get even more critical, as landlords are evicting tenants due to the new change in law. There are already 1,000 beds in Glastonbury as Airbnb's, and many are still registered as Class C3 dwellings, and not as Class R1 hotels. And yet, we are shamed for not paying council tax for services we do not have. We would gladly pay for services if they were provided. We have taken an initiative to not be a further burden on the taxpayer and a strain on the council. We are using laws that was first introduced in the 1970s during a housing crisis. Section 6 of Criminal Law Act 1977, which is the basis, what is commonly known, referred to as squatters' rights, was introduced in 1977. This section was intended to prevent landlords from forcibly evicting tenants by making it illegal to use violence or threats of violence to gain access to property when someone inside opposes entry. We have been using Section 6 and 144 to house ourselves for some time. We do appreciate that this is costly when carrying out evictions. We have tried to negotiate a better way forward with all authorities involved on many different occasions. We have made small progress with how we get treated on a face-to-face basis. Most improvements with local police force and Somerset Council. The problem being that they had lost their humanity towards the people deemed as problematic. By breaking down these walls of expectation, building bridges of communication, they no longer see us as obstacles, and have regained their humanity towards us, and see us as individuals. And in return, we treat each other with respect and understand that they do ultimately have a job to do. To do. This step forward has helped community relations, as it makes people have a sense of community. And that helps with wellbeing, and makes you want to do better in that community. However, Glastonbury Town Council has taken a very medieval stance, and still holds out of date prejudice, as displayed my earlier comment. In all evictions in this area, the council states that the people in occupation of the sites have no entitlement to the rights provided by Article A of the Human Rights Act. However, trailers and caravans present on lands act as the equivalent of private properties, and are de facto homes for the people living there. Therefore, you can, you can, they can be considered their private dwellings and properties, and therefore fall under the protection given by Article A. As a local planning authority, the council is in breach of its relevant obligations under planning laws, because it does not have sufficient supply of sites to meet the land's use requirements of travellers in this area. Indeed, the Planning and Housing Act 2016 C22, Section 124, clearly outlines a responsibility to all vehicle dwelling people. Three, in case of local housing authorities in England, the duty under subsection 1 includes a duty to consider the needs of people residing in or resorting to their district with respect to provision of a site on which caravans can be stationed. This is a clear case of prejudiced agenda which has led to a gross negligence of the council's duties. This has led to extreme tensions in the town. I propose a negotiation whereby an agreement can be reached to stay on the land and continue to have access to the land to keep temporary safe space off the side of the road.
Okay, I need to finish you there.
Sorry, sorry, it's literally one sentence.
Okay.
Where we're not bothering anyone, and also would support the Housing Plan Act 2016, and would be a positive step forward in tackling the ongoing issues in Glastonbury. Thank you.
Thanks, DJ. Okay, next is Christine Pryor, going to talk to us about 20 miles an hour. Thank you.
Hello, good evening, everybody.
Hello, Christine.
I'm here this evening to ask the council to instigate a campaign to remind drivers why we have a 20 mile an hour limit. And I would like to begin by thanking the town council, and in particular councillor Liz Lation, for getting Somerset Council to apply a 20 mile an hour limit in the town. The facts I've included in this are taken from Welsh data and 20plenty website. As a driver, it feels to me that we have a two-speed limit, as many drivers seem to ignore the 20 signs and continue to drive at 30. I think everyone assumes that they will be slowed down in their journey by driving slower, but research shows that traffic lights and congestion are what make you late. Driving at 20 may increase your journey time by one minute, and this can be offset by better traffic flow. One of the facts that has always stayed with me concerning 20 mile an hour limits is that a child hit by a car at 30 is three times more likely to die than an accident that occurs at 20 miles an hour. And anyone who's looked after children under five knows how quickly they can move, and no matter how careful you are, children that young have no road awareness, and could appear in front of your car without warning, and the consequences do not bear thinking about. According to insurers AXA, there is a public health benefit in cleaner air, as research shows that at 20 miles an hour, CO2 and NOx emissions are reduced by 25% compared to 30 miles an hour. And in the centre of a town, this makes a difference. Whilst doing this research, I also discovered noise levels reduced by three decibels, which is the equivalent of halving the noise at 20 miles an hour compared to 30 miles an hour. I'm here tonight as a spokesperson for Glastonbury Speedwatch, and they have asked me to include a few other reminders on their behalf. We'd like to see the 20 mile an hour limit extended to other areas of the town. Another speed identification device, if there is the finance, could be bought, which would make life easier for the council employees. And then we could have more sites for additional speed identification devices. We'd like to see pedestrian crossings at the Wirral Roundabout, St Dunstan School, and on the A39. There should be 30 mile an hour signage between the Wirral Park Roundabout and Morlins. It's not obvious what speed you should be going on that section of road. I have been advised that the best way forward is to ask Glastonbury.
And Angela Friend, please.
Good evening. Back in 1982, in a packed big hall, Glastonbury, Glastonians met to find out what was going to happen to our town, because Morlands closed down. It was packed, there was lots of suggestions. Mine was thrown out, but that's not, that's not. And what's gone on out on the site with the hotels and the units that are there are brilliant, no problem. But how much longer do we have to put up with the rubbish, the mess, and everything around the red brick building? It is absolutely disgraceful. As I can say at the moment, it's only saving grace is that part of it is now obscured by the bushes, that are obviously spring, they're in full bloom. But it is an absolute disgrace, and it doesn't matter who you talk to, whether they're Glastonbury people, whether they're street, whether, wherever, they say, what the devil's happening out there? I don't think, and who's responsible for it, I'd like to know, because it really needs sorting. My idea would be put a flipping bomb under it at the moment, but that's about the only, yeah. It's up to you, people that have, that have got the running of it, or the looking after of it. Can you just get your acts together and just sort it? There's no need to have messed everywhere. And the piles of rubble and, and everything that's there, it just needs getting rid of. It's disgraceful out there. That's one bit. Second bit, does anyone know what is actually happening in the Greek takeaway in Manor House Road? Is it still going? Is it not going? There seems to be an awful lot of activity going on there. And it would be good if someone would just go and have a look and see what's happening there. There seems to be fences going up everywhere, and, yeah. I don't think the Yahoo, or whatever it was called, I don't think they're still going. But, as I say, it's just someone could just have a, have a look and see what's going on there, because it, to me, it looks a little bit suspicious. Okay?
Thank you.
That's me this week.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you. Christine, would you like to light our unity candle and join, light the candle? Yeah, thank you. Thank you. And please join us in a silent minute. Thank you, councillors. Thank you. Yeah, sure. Okay, apologies for absence and reasons given?
Your worship, I've had apologies from councillors Price, Smyth, McDougall and Cottle, all owing to personal commitments.
Okay, thank you. Any declarations of interest that have not previously been reported? No, okay. To approve and sign the minutes of the last meeting as a correct record?
We've got two sets this evening, your worship.
Okay.
First set is the minutes from the meeting of the 10th of June.
Yeah.
And I've got the copy for you to sign here. So what I shall do, let me give you that copy. Maybe save yourself some time, we can sign as well. I believe they were circulated in advance, weren't they, Katie?
Okay, so, any comments on page seven? Page eight? Page nine? Page 10?
Page 11, your worship.
Okay, page 11? Page 12? Finally, page 13? Can we accept those as true record? I will suffice. Thank you.
Also, your worship got the set of minutes from the meeting held on the 1st of July.
Oh, yes, please, John.
Your worship, I am very sorry that I was absent without apology. I'm afraid that I didn't receive a summons for the meeting.
Thank you. That was noted and understood about using your work email. Thank you.
My version seems to say the minutes of the 10th of June. Yeah, sorry, there was a, there was a mistake with the title, so we've corrected this set and the set that the mayor will sign. But yes, we spotted that mistake this afternoon. Page 15, your worship.
Do I have those ones?
No, you don't. They're right here.
Okay, thank you.
Page 14 and 15.
Thank you. So any comments on page 14? On page 15? Okay. Thank you. So can I accept those as a true record? I will suffice. Thank you. And then the next item is to receive an update on actions from the last meeting.
Thank you, worship. In terms of actions from the meeting held in June, I have been in touch with the Internal Drainage Board about ethical banking. And I have also asked Somerset Council for an update on closed circuit television. I've not yet heard back. I believe the service, the head of operations, not the service director, the head of operations is very busy at the moment within the devolution process. But I will endeavour to chase the, him again, and also the manager of the CCTV service. And in terms of actions from the last meeting, the outcome of the complaint was made known to the complainant.
Oh, thank you.
And I've progressed the other matter that was disgusting confidence.
Thank you. Latest crime statistics report, and an update from the police. So it looks like we have no officers present?
Yes, sorry, I forgot to change the wording of that agenda item. The police weren't planning to come this evening.
Okay.
The, the link, I believe, was in your summons, and I've got it projected, your worship. So the latest data seems to be April, so it's a bit of a lag.
I noticed that. That's a real lag, isn't it?
Yeah.
That's the same as what we had last meeting.
Yeah. Councillors?
Thank you, worship. I wonder whether we could see the contacts of 132 crimes in relation to the last three years?
It seemed to peak in the summer, doesn't it?
Yeah.
In the summer just now.
And it looks like we're actually down from 2022, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Slightly.
Yeah, it does. And, and we have had more police on the streets as well, so especially from the 1st of July.
Would you mind putting up this, so we can see the pie chart? That's the one.
Oh, yeah.
Worship.
Yeah, please.
And just to remind councillors and those that attended the last TCCR meeting, we were privy to some much more detailed statistics on that evening. And we did ask that maybe we could have the same level of detail at the council meeting. So hopefully, we might be able to get something a little bit more informative in future.
Yeah, that, that actually addresses one of the long-term issues that was about the, the violence thing. So like, how much of that was domestic, and how much is random on the streets?
May I?
Yeah, please do.
Yeah, when we did see that split up, it was actually, any violence, obviously, it was horrible, but it was actually quite, the violence against women was a minute apart.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, anything else on that? No. Okay. The next one, to consider and approve the schedule of payments.
This was circulated in advance, your worship.
Yes, it was.
I had a couple of queries which I've answered, so.
Okay, thank you.
Don't know if there's any other queries.
Do we need any action from us, or just that we can sit there?
If, if it's generally accepted, then yourself and another member of the council will need to sign it in the absence of the deputy mayor. You can choose who else you'd like to sign it, your worship.
Okay.
I do actually, may I give you the copy I have? I've got a non-double sided copy, and it's better for the, the minute file. It's easier to read. There you go, your worship. Thank you.
Are councillors generally happy with this?
What, what kind of developments has happened there, please?
I asked for the, I asked for the number.
Eight, five, three, four, seven?
Yeah. So that is, that's works in relation to the planning application, and all the other work that surrounds that for putting solar photovoltaic panels on the town hall. So they are preparing that planning application to go into Somerset Council by September, I believe. So that's an instalment for their work and the other things, because of its, because of the town hall's listed nature, the other reports we have to have completed, we have to have a, well, there's a structural report that needs to be done to check that the roof is strong enough, and also a heritage consultant, because it's a listed building. So that's one of the instalments for the work that they're doing toward that planning application.
Thank you.
It's expensive business, councillor Napper.
Certainly is.
Half the price of Glastonbury, aren't they?
Yes, please, councillor Cook.
Just, oh, sorry, I'm jumping ahead here, aren't I? Still on that one, aren't I? I'll come back when you're on that.
Okay.
We've got glasses.
Okay. Budget monitoring report.
Thank you, worship. Again, so you mentioned that.
Oh, sorry, councillor Napper.
Are you going to turn the page on this one?
I, well, we already had to turn the page, councillor Napper, but please do. If you have another query, let me know, and I will.
I do have another query.
Yeah, to answer it.
What number is it? Five, eight, one, one. Cleaning of St John's Square, £1,450.
That's a toilet, is it?
That, that's the cost of cleaning St John's toilets in the car park, every month.
All right, okay. It just seems a lot of money. We talked about that when we.
Yeah.
When we took it on.
Yeah. Okay, so councillor cousins?
I would reflect that as councillors, we are clearly in the wrong jobs.
Yes. Yes, there have been complaints about them being cleaned at night and then getting messed up during the day.
Isn't it?
Awful.
Awful, yes. So budget monitoring report. Again, this was circulated. It's quite a lengthy document, but I do like the new format.
So I answered a couple of queries that councillor Ronny Dougal had. I took on board comments about formatting, making it easier to read. I hope this has been easier to read, and will endeavour to answer any questions.
Councillor Cook, oh, councillor Ronny Dougal, thank councillor Cook.
Thank you very much for changing the format. It really is possible to read it now. I was able to go through it and understand it and ask my questions. I'm very happy. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. I still need to arrange the session to offer to councillors to come in to understand it in a bit more detail, and what some of the budget lines actually relate to. When the responsible finance officer is back from annual leave, we are going to look to put that in the calendar for some time after the finance and general purposes. Well, actually, she's not back for that meeting, but when she's back from annual leave, we will circulate a date for that, probably try and avoid August to give you all a break. Maybe we'll schedule it for some time early September.
Councillor Cook?
I have a question on this. Is there any chance we could have page numbers, so we can have a quick, quick reference to anything we might want to pick up, which is exactly what I'm doing now, because I'm.
Yes, that's fine. There are, there are numbers for every single budget line. If you have a query and you give me a budget line number, I'll be able to find it. But yes, I'll take that back and have page numbers put on there.
Yeah, that'd be really helpful, because this is on page, you might even know it, Glastonbury Way.
Oh, yeah. Does the budget line have a, have a number? I'll be able to search them. The four-digit number to the left-hand side, the nominal code. If you give me that one, councillor Cook, I can find it.
Oh, yes, sorry. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, got it. Right, okay, so it's six, five, oh, one.
It's five, zero, one.
Yeah, didn't see them. Is that good enough for everybody else, now we know?
That comes through as public footpath expenses.
It's expensive, but I thought this was income.
No, there wasn't, there was one about Glastonbury Way income, and I think it was zero.
Four, nine, zero, one. Four, nine, zero, one. What was your query, councillor Cook?
Six, six, five, zero, one, and six, five, zero, two.
That's my Caesar query.
Thank you. Anything else, councillors? Do you need to do anything with this?
No, this, this report just gets noted, your worship. So if there's a, an I will suffice.
Yeah.
An I, thank you.
An I, thank you. To receive an update on asset and service devolution from Somerset Council.
Nice short update, your worship. I continue to work with Somerset Council to secure the freehold transfer of a number of open areas and buildings. Somerset Council's legal team is incredibly busy at the moment. So we're operating under a maintenance agreement which I've signed with Somerset Council. Our staff are now cutting grass and inspecting play areas. They asked me to pass on their thanks for, to the property and assets committee, who there are members around the table, for the purchase of the lawnmower that they identified. And we've got two new community services officers starting toward the end of this month.
Yeah.
Tom and Oliver. They will go on a variety of training courses so that they can also inspect play areas and they can work on the highway etcetera with their chapter eight training. And they'll be put on duties that don't require those qualifications until such a time that they've secured them. But we're very much looking forward to having them both start with us full time on the 21st of July.
Thank you. Councillor Henderson.
Thank you, Chair. Normally at this time of year, I remind councillor Cottle about the vegetation that creeps across the pathway on the bypass. I mean, it's incredible how quickly that stuff moves. And I was down, walking down there yesterday and it is, in some places nearly right away across the path. And that does get used a lot by cyclists, runners, mothers with prams, etcetera. It's quite, quite a busy little pathway and if you don't get on top of it now, it's going to be right away crossing into the road. I was just going to ask, is that now our responsibility Connor?
Which pathway are you referring to councillor Henderson?
The path runs right away up the A39, the really throat.
High pass, pardon. That one, that's not one we've formally taken on, but ultimately if Somerset Council don't do anything.
It has, sometimes it's done by Somerset and sometimes it wasn't done by community service, I think, so.
Oh, okay.
But whatever. I mean, I'm.
I will.
As usual.
I think it's worth getting in touch with councillor Cottle and maybe also you can report these things on Somerset Council's website.
You do.
Yes.
You report it and we get no joy, we can look at what, what our team will do, but it's not really a responsibility that we've formally taken on. It's something that since the end of the IDVODI contract, Somerset Council have in-sourced that function, street cleaning and vegetation maintenance on the side of the highway. So it is still a Somerset Council.
Okay, thanks.
Responsibility. So if you can report it and let me know if you get no joy, then we can.
Yes, please councillor Rennie Dougal.
Yes, I did report something and got no joy. And I spoke to Nick Cottle about it and there's still no joy. So do you recommend that I report again? And this is a spring on Leggernutt Road that goes on to the pavement that makes the pavement covered in algae, which makes it very slippery. It's quite steep at that point and it's at a bend. So people have to go onto the road with pushchairs or old people and it's very dangerous. So I reported it twice now on the website.
Yep.
And I've asked Nick about it.
Yep, I would keep reporting it councillor Rennie Dougal because that's not, that's, that's not something unfortunately that we could fix because that sounds like potentially a bit of a complicated problem.
There are actually three springs, but it's one that's particularly bad.
Okay, that's fine. I would keep reporting, keep, keep on at them.
Keep badgering, thank you.
I'll keep reporting to Nick as well. Yeah, please do.
Councillor Osborn.
Both Nick and Susie have to report it on the website. So if you get in touch with them, all they do is put it on the website, the same as you would, because that's the only way that you can now get complaints to.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Henderson.
Sorry, Chair, do stand up twice on the same thing. But while we're on the subject of cutting back vegetation, there's a resident of Corset Batch has asked me several times about a neighbour of his who's, as we know, that path in Corset Batch is.
Nightmare.
Very narrow anyway, doesn't need a lot to push you into the road. There's a hedge which is actually covering the path and he has asked his neighbour to cut it back and they pretty much refused. So he phoned me and said, would the council do something about it? Which I know if we do step in, it tends to become our job then. People think, well, if I leave it alone, the council will take it on board. But I did wonder, I was going to have a chat with Mike tonight, Mike Smyth, if maybe a ward member for that area was to maybe have a word with the.
Yes, could, you could try that or you could try reporting that to highways.
Right.
And highways can liaise and basically insist that the landowner.
That's great.
Cut that hedge back.
Yeah, that, that's probably a best one.
On private property, they'll tend to write to the person and say, if it's not done within a certain timeframe, highways come and do it and then they will charge the homeowner.
Can I speak on this?
Yes, please say.
Because part of the A361 committee, we were in touch with highways. And one of the things that they said that they would do with regard to Corset Batch, they said six things. And one of them was the cutting back of the vegetation. Now, at the time, in fact, it got cut back, but maybe when we have our next SEAP meeting and A361 is becoming part of SEAP, we could actually bring this up again for me to write again to the traffic manager who we have been in contact with over the past three years. Not getting very far, very fast at all, but we can ask once again for the vegetation to be cut back because it is one of the very.
It's a terrible, terrible bit of rain.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Cousins.
I'm not sure if this is one for property and assets, but I see that there's a window opening in St Dunstan's house with pigeons going in and out, who aren't wearing hard hats, but maybe prowling whilst inside.
Thank you.
Whether that is something that somebody might be alerted to so that they could stop the pigeon invasion. Oh, it's just gone here and.
Thank you. Councillor Cook.
Well, we're on trees and vegetation and all the rest of it. I do get, I've had quite a few complaints from, what's that damn road called? As you, as you go down out of Glastonbury, you can turn left across the road, the estate there, the trees there on the.
Avalon Estate.
Avalon Estate. Yeah, and there, the trees there, they're all kind of growing over. One of the residents there is particularly concerned about one tree, which was going towards her house. So same thing, it sounds like we've got quite a big potential operation that we could possibly have to take over at some time. So maybe we should prepare for that and have a good look around, you know, a good survey of the town.
Yeah.
Where bushes are over growing and etcetera, etcetera.
Councillor Napper.
Thank you, your worship. Going back to what councillor Cousins had just said about pigeons going in, if they are dropping things, then you've got to have a specialist person to go in there because they are quite, quite dangerous to health and wellbeing, the, the actual droppings of a pigeon. So, so we ought to have a look at that quite urgently. Thank you.
Want to sort it out?
Yeah.
Want to close them?
Pay them.
Hi.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, town clerk, an update on St Dunstan's house health and wellbeing sector, please.
I've just requested the window got shut, your worship.
Thank you. That's faster than Somerset would have said it.
I think the site manager's on holiday, so I've messaged the managing director who's hopefully going to come over and.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for letting me know. I will pop round and sort it out. More in line with what's happening in the project. We've got a progress meeting tomorrow that you're attending, your worship. Continues to go very well, quality of the work very high, speed of the work could be a bit quicker. The atrium roof is now mostly on complete. We are just waiting for the new solar roof to be plugged in and become live. We're waiting for the glazing for either end of the atrium to be delivered and then installed. I believe the floor of the atrium with the screeding, the underfloor heating, etcetera, etcetera is coming on nicely. Many will have probably noticed the new front door to St Dunstan's house has been fitted. We're pleased to know it's not staying that incredibly bright white colour. It's going to be painted, if you look at the market house across the road, it's going to be painted a lovely dark blue. So it will be a lot less in your face, but it will allow members of the public to easily access the building once it's complete with the new set of steps from Magdalen Street and the existing disability access from the car park. Works inside are going well, colours have been chosen, colours have gone on the wall. Some colours are beautiful, some are horrendous and we've said, no, we're going to change our mind on that one actually. It's amazing how different they are from the colour swatches that paint companies give you. Targeting a handback to the town council of a date in September.
Okay.
I want that to be early September. It might not quite be early September, but we continue to push to get it back as soon as possible. In terms of the operational lead position that was recently advertised for the building, but we've attracted grant funding for the first year. I held a round of successful interviews with councillors Oakden, yourself, your worship, and the manager from West Mendip Primary Care Network, who was giving us a bit of specialist insight into the sort of NHS social, not social care, NHS primary care and wellbeing point of view. We made an offer at the end of last week to a successful candidate who has accepted. So a bit like the good news with recruiting two new community services officers, we will very soon have our operational lead in place for St Dunstan's house and that person's role will be to make sure that, great, we've delivered a fantastic building, but making the building work for the community. So we've got a lot of confidence in the candidate and look forward to being able to introduce them to you at a future meeting. And you should, you should hear their name, her name's Ellie. You should hear their name around and about pretty soon, your worship. So all continues to go well and I'll issue another update via Facebook on progress when I have a look around the site tomorrow.
Thank you. Councillor Napper and then councillor Henderson.
Thank you, your worship. On the Beckery building, on the corner there, there is an awful lot of parking in the last sort of month or whatever. I guess it's tourist school, but could we put in a request for double yellow lines on that corner, please? Because somebody's going to have a big mishap on, on there in the very, very near future. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Henderson.
Thanks for this question. The successful candidate, will that not start until the St Dunstan is actually up and running?
We've got to before.
So the person has a six week notice period. Their current employer is very generously allowing them to use two days per week of their current employment to go toward helping us get St Dunstan's house ready. So I'm imagining they should be helping us for two days a week for that six week period. And then they will be our full time employee from that point on. So it's not quite a case of they're going to have to hit the ground at a hundred miles an hour when the building opens. They are going to be on board with us.
Part of the process.
Yeah.
To help fill it up now, ready for when it opens. And we have already been doing a lot of work with Jack Cross at the Primary Care Network to get organisations lined up to use St Dunstan's house. So I won't break any potential confidences, but I had a meeting with an organisation last week. We have a year long programme of things to happen in Glastonbury, three days per week, and they currently don't have anywhere to host it. We showed them around St Dunstan's house last week and they went fantastic. We're going to bring our programme of three days a week of whatever this stuff is into St Dunstan's house. So we've been doing a lot of work to get a programme ready for when the building opens. And I imagine it's only going to get busier once it's complete and people see what the facilities are actually, pardon me, like.
Councillor Cousins.
Your worship brought excellent news. I wonder whether we should be liaising with Sarah Dyke MP so that she can tell the Houses of Commons about Glastonbury's new hub, Health Mobbing Hub. I think it's a wonderful word, hub. I don't want to sound just like Trump, but hub is a good word.
Perhaps the best word in the world councillor.
And but with it, Glastonbury is leading the way on the government's thinking. If only they could understand why.
Thank you. So we have had quite a lot of engagement with Sarah Dyke MP. She has been to visit the site, not massively recently, but she has been to visit. And I believe she has raised it in the Houses of Commons. I will send her an update about the project and extend an invitation to her to come and view it before it's open again in the hope that she can again raise its profile in the way you described.
Thank you. Councillor Lok Bando.
I wonder if there's any plans for a more formal celebratory official opening where we could invite Sarah Dyke and others.
There will be.
Yeah, there, there are no concrete plans yet councillor Lok Bando because they do depend on when we get given back the building. I would quite like to be given back the building and be able to use it for a period of weeks and do some snagging before we officially open. I have been having some informal conversations with the mayor about potential format for an opening event where we could open the doors more widely. I believe we will probably follow what Glastonbury Abbey did, where there will be a small official opening for people who've been involved in the project, in the Glastonbury Town Deal and other, for want of a better expression, the great and the good. And then there'll be a, a public opening where I'm kind of hoping, hoping we will just be able to throw the doors open and invite people in to come in, meet people who've been involved in the project, have a wander around the building, reminisce on their experiences of what the building used to be because it's had a number of different uses and see how we've renovated it and just have an opportunity to just wander around, have a good nosy in preparation for when hopefully they come in and benefit from something happening in the building. But there's been so much promotion of, of how it's been going as a project and how it's going to look. It would be nice to essentially just be able to throw the doors open, invite people in and talk to them about the project. But yes, no date confirmed, but that is something that the property and assets committee are going to have to consider.
Thank you. Any other day? No, okay. To consider and adopt the community review.
Thank you, your worship. So this was a funded project that the town council undertook with Community Council for Somerset, who I believe are very soon going to rename themselves. Whereas the neighbourhood plan is a planning document, the community review was more of a social document. I don't know if there are any members who were on the community review steering group who might want to give a bit more information. I'll put a copy up on the board, it's very long.
Okay.
What we're essentially looking to do, your worship, is to adopt the community review that has been completed and then also to note the contents in the action plan, which can form part of Glastonbury Town Council's sort of vision for the future. So what I'll do, I will slowly scroll through the document that's very long and hope, your worship, that members of the steering group might want to give you a bit more of an overview of its contents and its findings.
I could speak to this because I was.
Yes, please, yeah, thank you.
I was chair of the little committee that saw this through along with others. We were invited to do this, we said yes, and we went through a whole process guided by the community council. First of all, we recruited a subcommittee of ourselves and residents from John Fossettown. They met, we identified areas we wanted to know more about, which you're just seeing now. All the kind of big issues that people always are unhappy about in Glastonbury. We then devised a whole bunch of questions where we could ask people for their views and suggestions and thoughts about those areas, working with the community council for standard questions with clear answers. So we drew up a questionnaire, a quite a long one, quite detailed. Then we put it out as widely as we possibly could to the whole town, let it sort of, you know, bring in the responses for a month or more. I think we've got about 500 responses.
Okay.
And we've already scrolled through, we're just scrolling through the demographics of the response. 500 we were pleased with, although it's a lot less than 10,000 inhabitants. It was a lot more women than men responded, a lot of long term residents, which felt very good. And a lot of relatively older people responded, which felt good. Anyway, we felt happy with our responses. And then the rest of the response was people's views. Mostly multiple choice, but also lots of comments. So all that came in, the CCS analysed it for us, produced this report with all the pictures and everything. And, and it's basically a whole bunch of evidence, for instance, just up there. So for instance, your main concerns about living in Glastonbury, we now have evidence from the people of the town that 252 people, half the responses, see antisocial behaviour as a big issue. So the idea was to create a whole evidence for all sorts of facts that we and others can then use in fundraising campaigns, action campaigns, whatever campaigns we want to bolster the campaigns. That was just one. So the rest of the report is most of those responses about all those issues. We then took the, took the report and we were then guided to an action plan where we took the top issues and tried to work out what we could do about them. And if we couldn't do something, who could do something about it? That's a separate document we've also been shared with, a big spreadsheet. There's all the issues line by line by line, then who could do what and what they could do and when they could do it and blah, 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 blah. So we were a bit feeling our way with this, but it was our best shot. It's an action plan arising out of the evidence brought to us by the people of Glastonbury.
Thank you.
What we need to do now is share this with anyone who wants to do anything, campaign about anything or fundraise for anything, so they can have the evidence and then. about anything, or fundraise for anything, so they can have the evidence and take it forward.
Okay.
Plus ourselves, of course.
Thank you.
So, it's quite a lot of work, hopefully useful, as long as we use it.
Thank you. Councillor Cousins.
Thank you very much. When we're looking at like the list of the things that people were concerned about, were they given a pre-existing list that they could vote on, or could they put the item in themselves? I'm just curious about how the subjects were selected or established.
I think the answer's both. We provided multiple choice questions, much better for analysis, with lots of pre-selected options than other down the bottom, where they could type in whatever they wanted.
Thank you. Councillor Much.
I know homelessness is high up on this, and the thing, the complaint that keeps coming into my ears, and I agree with it, is CB and Airbnb issues. And it's not people who are just letting out a room to make ends meet in their own homes, it's either companies or very wealthy individuals, don't even live in the town, buying up properties, and then letting the whole property out and removing them from the housing market. And I wonder if we can learn anything from the experience. I think in Cornwall, they've introduced legislation to inhibit that, either through very heavy taxation of people that do it. So, without actually outlawing it, you can make it non-viable.
Yeah.
And whether there's something that we can learn through a, assuming that we're resolved in wanting to address that. I see it almost every day in my own street, you know, a house that's become vacant.
Yeah.
It's a family that lives abroad, doesn't disrupt them, but they've decided here's a great way to make money, and therefore that great big house is attracted from available housing. So, you know, I think it would be very worthwhile establishing a liaison with those councils that have succeeded, I believe, in Cornwall in addressing that.
Yeah. Councillor Stone.
I thought it was interesting, the question you raised about whether they were pre-thinged questions, because actually, lack of housing, homelessness and cost of housing come up three times, at least. So, it's like people are coming at it from different angles.
Yeah.
I was just going to say, one of my sons used to work for Jeffrey Cox, who has a constituency in Devon.
Yeah.
And they were doing a lot of work on second homes.
Yes.
And I could get in touch with him about the stuff they were doing, because they were trying to bring in legislation to stop it.
Yeah, Gwynnors up in North Wales, they did the same. I think they put 200% council tax on second homes. Councillor Cousins, councillor Ronny Dugan.
Yes, thank you very much. So, I've actually gone through the action plan document, because I think action plans are always a really good idea. And I've noted a lot of things that are actually, we have been trying to deal with already. And I sort of feel as though with some things, like recent designation of the A361 in order to stop the HGVs going through. You know, we've tried with Somerset Council, as I mentioned earlier, for the past three years, and it really is a stone wall. And I've got very bloody head now from it. So, now we've been going to our MP, Sarah Dyke, but we're getting nothing back from there either. And there's this feeling of, we've got this action plan, things that people want, pedestrianisation of the high street, the Airbnb problem, I've listed them all down here, but what do we do?
Yeah.
What can we do? How can we get beyond the blockages that are put in our way for actually getting anything happening? With Airbnbs, the town council can't do it, it's got to be at least countywide, as with Cornwall, although Wales, it's countrywide, Spain, it's countrywide. So, that means the government doing it, or at least Somerset Council. Now, asking Somerset Council to do something to get it, you know, I mean, it really is impossible, Somerset Council. So, after what, my six and a half years on the town council, I feel despair, and think, we can do this wonderful thing, we can make our wonderful action plan, we can say all the things that we want, the pedestrian crossing by BQ, pedestrianisation of the high street, the HGVs, and so on and so forth, I've got the list here. Cycle planes.
Yeah.
Gosh, wouldn't it be fantastic to have the Welsh Road with a cycle plane, you know? How do we actually get it out?
Yeah.
That is what I've got to say.
Okay, thank you. Who was first? Councillor Napper.
Thank you, your worship. I don't think Serena is going to like what I say, but as far as I'm concerned, and a lot of other people, the only way to stop the 361 and the heavy goods vehicles coming through Glastonbury is to build a relief road from Timbridge out towards the north. And I just don't understand, or the north-east, I just don't understand why we can't sort of back that, because that would certainly ease an awful lot of our problems. I know it was on the statute book at one time, and it's been taken off, but I think that we ought to reconsider that, because I hate to see all this transport, and there's more and more transport coming towards Shaptamallett, I hate to see all this transport coming down through the town. And we can divert it in a quite, not a simple way, money-wise, it's not simple, but it's a simple way that we can get rid of that transport in the town. Thank you.
Right reply, councillor Cousins.
Thank you. I think the reason why we're opposed to building a massive new highway across here, which is what was on the statutory books, if you-
Not massive at all.
Yes, it was. Is that the cost of that, and the houses that would pay for it, are astronomical in every aspect, whereas two signs, one saying 7.5 ton weight limit in our grave, and another one saying 7.5 ton weight limit at the BQ roundabout, will be much simpler, cheaper, and we'd get the same result.
But it won't get done.
Thank you.
It won't get done.
It'll get done. No, I just- Councillor John Francesco.
Very much.
Yeah, thank you, she's been waiting for ages.
Just to say that, when this list was drawn up, oh, and my computer's gone, when this list was drawn up, this wasn't for the council to do this, this isn't piling more on us. It was actually, there is a column quite near the end that says responsible persons or organisations. And those are basically, as Lok Bando said, it's for groups, or anyone out there that's already formed or not, to use this as information and a resource for either fundraising or putting in a fundraiser. So, yeah, we don't have to do all this.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Napper.
Thank you, your worship. I find it incredible that we can't do that, because in, I think it was 1825, the Somerset and Dorset could have put a railway truck out through there, but now, in 2025, we can't do it. Why?
Expensive.
Thank you. Okay, so, can I please have a proposal and a seconda to adopt the community review?
I'd be happy to propose.
Thank you.
A second.
Okay, all those in favour? Okay, any against? And abstentions? Okay, one against, two abstentions. Thank you. Thank you.
People, Terry.
Okay, so here's another exciting one. To nominate a councillor for the Step Ride and Thrive Project, which I'm sure you're all fully aware of.
Thank you, your worship. This is the project that's been run through the Avalon and Poldons Local Community Network, which this parish is part of. Glastonbury Town Council is acting, we applied for the grant on behalf of the local community network, because local community networks were not eligible to apply for the grant funding, but councils were. We are holding the money and we will make the expenditure. The project is being led by the Avalon and Poldons Local Community Network, I think it's the Health and Wellbeing Group, and the manager of the Avalon Marshes Centre. The Step Ride and Thrive Project, as you'll remember from the meeting where we considered allowing ourselves, well, not allowing ourselves, but you agreed for the town council to apply for the grant and hold the money and make the expenditure to enable it to happen. It's a project that has seen the Avalon Marshes Centre added to the route of the, now it's either the 668 or the 688, I can't remember.
668 or 661.
It's an existing bus route, so the Avalon Marshes Centre has been added to that bus route, and it also includes information on local walking cycling routes, and also workshops from a charity called, I believe, On Your Bike, to get people in each of the 23 parishes, I believe, in Avalon and Poldons, LCN area, local community network area, to benefit from a workshop from that charity on being able to maintain your bicycle. Now, the project has asked that a councillor essentially represent the council to that project and be a slightly closer part of that project, because the grant funder, the Somerset Association of Local Councils, feels that as the council that has applied for and is holding the money, that one of our councillors should be more involved with how the project is progressing. I don't necessarily see that being a role where the councillor has to dedicate a lot of their time, but it will be a bit of their time to understanding how the project is progressing, understand the monitoring and evaluation of the project, how it can be continued in the future, once this grant pot funding has been exhausted, has been spent, and to bring reports back to the town council based on the progress of that project. So, I'm hoping there is someone around the table who's interested in that role.
Thank you. Did you have your hand up on that?
I did, but it was to ask what was involved.
Okay. Councillor Henderson.
I don't mind being involved with that.
Okay, I'd be very happy to second you.
Councillor Henderson.
Yeah.
Led by councillor White.
And move to vote. Unanimous, thank you, thank you.
I will put you in touch with the manager of the Avalon Marshes Centre, a lady called Natalie Watson, who's doing most of the work for the project, and she'll invite you to the meetings that are held about the project and send you updates, Steve.
Thanks very much.
And it's a great place for lunch.
It's very nice out there, actually.
It is.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. To consider and adopt an updated complaints policy and procedure.
Thank you, your worship. This was referred from the last-
The extra.
-1st of July.
Yeah.
So, in terms of feedback from councillors on the updated policy and procedure, which essentially brings us as a council into the 21st century and more able to deal with, I hope we don't get many complaints, but to deal with complaints when we do get them. So, I've highlighted in yellow the changes that were particularly made. So, I clarified in the section two about complaints in general, that complaints need to be provided in writing.
Yes.
That complaints are made in writing to myself, unless, I hope we don't get complaints about me, but unless in the case that they are directly about me, then they are made to whoever the mayor is of the day.
Yeah.
So, I clarified that. So, I did take on board the point about anonymous complaints, and I did a lot of research of other complaints, policies and procedures, and took them from, I believe actually it was Dorset Council, so Dorset's Unitary Authority, that had a very clear section about anonymous complaints. And they essentially said that anonymous complaints generally are not normally investigated. Whilst a complainant may request that their identity is withheld, it's only to be agreed in exceptional circumstances, because particularly in the case of, this is the section about complaints about officers slash employees, that the complainants have rights, but so too does the person being complained about, and they need to understand who has made the complaint in order to give the investigation the full context behind it. So, I've taken inspiration from that complaints policy, that generally anonymous complaints won't be investigated, however, requests to keep someone's identity secret can be considered, but only in exceptional circumstances. That was a change in that section. And then in the section about complaints about the council committees or decisions, again, I've highlighted that generally anonymous complaints won't be considered, but the requests can be made for identities to be withheld, and that can be granted in exceptional circumstances, that's that bunch of highlighting. Stage one, stage two and stage three process remain the same. And I made the change to section six, which was previously titled vexatious complaints.
Yes.
I gave quite a lot of thought to the wording of this section, and decided upon unreasonable complaints. So, this whole section has been clarified, it's replaced the word vexatious, although it does make reference in the first section, that in law sometimes referred to as a vexatious.
Yeah. I looked online as well, and pretty much every synonym for vexatious would have caused us problems as well.
Unfortunately, there was no nice alternative word, however, unreasonable felt the best of a bad bunch. So, the sentiment of this section, the process behind this section hasn't changed, it's merely the title and the language that we refer to, an unreasonable complainant.
Okay.
That hasn't been changed, your worship.
Okay.
So, I believe I've taken councillors' feedback on board.
Yeah.
And I'm hoping tonight you will be in a position to propose, second and vote that this policy be adopted as of not the 1st of July, but the 8th of July.
Thank you. Councillor Cook.
This is the other word, vexatious. Vexatious will cover any amount of similar nature on the same person. So- Sorry, what you're saying there? Any individual?
No. So, in this section, an unreasonable complainant is one who persists with spurious, aggressive and/or abusive complaints which have no grounds. This may include making serial complaints about different issues, or continuing to raise the same or similar matters repeatedly. So, it covers both someone submitting many, many complaints that have no grounds, or continuing to complain about something that the council considered it's resolved, or there is no resolution that the complainant will be happy with.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Cousins.
Your worship, I haven't pre-read this, I don't think I've got the link to these documents.
So, the deputy mayor was quite concerned about using vexatious, knowing how Glastonbury is.
I was going to ask something else, I'm assuming that complaints about the council, I'm not sure if this is correct, because certainly complaints about councils can be taken to the-
Monitoring, yeah.
But can complaints about the council be taken to SULC or NARC?
No.
Okay, thank you.
And complaints about the council also can't be referred to the local government and social care ombudsman, because, I don't know, I think I've put it in this document. There is a section in the Local Government Act 1974, there you go, town council is not subject to the jurisdiction of the local government and social care ombudsman as per section 34.1 of the Local Government Act 1974, because we essentially, we aren't on the list of bodies that that ombudsman can consider complaints about.
Let me get around the accusation of marking our own homework.
It's a very tricky one, councillor Cousins. It's not unique to Glastonbury Town Council, it's all towns and parishes in England, potentially even Wales, but definitely in England, that there doesn't seem to be a higher authority with which complaints can be submitted to.
Right reply.
Thank you, your worship. I wonder whether, I'm assuming that, as you say, other parishes, some of them are quite big, I think of Frumore, Weston Super Mayor, these parishes possibly need the safety of an external person to review us, should our own internal investigation prove unworthy in some way. I'm not saying that that would happen in this council, I'm thinking of other places. But if that was so, should we not write to the National Association of Councillors and raise this as an issue, and ask them whether they should look into that at perhaps their next AGM or their next meeting nationally?
It may be a good time to just make the point that one of the vendors of the light newspaper, I'm sure we all are very respectful of and digest in great detail, has informed me that this council is being investigated for grand corruption.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry, for what corruption?
This, the light.
Yes.
What sort of corruption was it?
Well, he seems disturbed by the fact that I am having a yacht built in Monaco, there's a bit of a problem with the gin deck impacting the-
Didn't you have your teeth done in Turkey?
Thank you.
Didn't you have your teeth done in Turkey? That's what's triggered all this.
Okay. Councillor Ronny Dugan.
I'm interested, I'll just be talking to me too long.
Yeah.
I'd like to propose to re-sign this.
Okay, thank you. Is there a seconda? Thank you, LP. And all those in favour? Thank you. Are you, you voting for this councillor much?
Sorry, wouldn't be voting for him.
Yeah, I, I believe it is, to, to adopt this complaints policy. Thank you, unanimous. Thank you, councillors. Okay. Right. Item 13, to call an additional property and assets meeting.
It's a very simple one, your worship. There's going to be a property and assets committee meeting at 6pm on Thursday, that is this Thursday, the 10th, before the finance and general purposes committee meeting. And that is to consider the tenders received for the contract notice that was issued for the chairs to purchase for St Dunson's house.
Yeah.
Because we need to try and beat the, basically...
August holiday.
Basically, the, the, the European holiday month of August to try and get an order in for components for furniture to be assembled here in the UK, but a lot of components come from Italy. And the Italians enjoy the month of August seemingly as a national holiday. So that is just to make councillors aware, it's already been called, I've emailed paperwork, notice is up on the notice board, so please, property and assets committee members come at 6pm on Thursday.
And I'm meeting you beforehand.
You are, yes, councillor Roney Dougal, we're going to wrestle with Microsoft.
Councillor Cousins?
I don't have to give my apologies as I'm working on it.
Okay, thank you. John Apologies. Thank you. Okay, thank you councillors. To note the resolutions of delegated committees.
These are just for noting, your worship. These were in the folder, I shall scroll through them, but as I say, just for noting. There's going to be the deputy chair of services.
Of services?
Yeah, sorry, so it should say deputy chair, I think. That's just a mistake on the right end. Katie will take that and rectify that link, Katie.
The, the services committee?
Yeah, that's fine.
I, I, I'm Chair, LB is deputy.
That'll be changed. That's the end of that one, your worship.
Thank you. We just noted, yes?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Updates from advisory committees.
On the board, your worship, there are no recommendations to consider.
Perfect. So I presume we've, yeah, no, no further action with that. To receive unitary councillor award reports.
Had anything in writing, your worship, and councillor Cottle has provided his apologies and councillor Hart is not present. If I receive anything in writing, I'll circulate it after the meeting.
Thank you. councillor Napper?
Thank you, your worship. It would be nice to see our other county councillor, sorry, council, Somerset council person here. I've, I've said it many times before, but I, I will say it again, and I suppose you're tired of me saying it, but I think it would be nice to, to have her present. Thank you.
councillor Cousins?
I'm happy for it permitted that I'm not tired of him saying it.
Thank you. To receive updates, to receive updates from lead councillors and representatives to outside bodies. I don't think we have much of anything, do we? councillor Manning?
I just want to add one, one quick plug. On the 17th of July, Thursday, the 17th of July at 6pm, it's the annual chamber summer informal networking event, or put it another way, strawberries and prosecco.
Wow.
And it's at Middlewick.
Seventeenth, 6pm.
6pm. And basically, if you would like to attend, then you need to send chamber on the board, which is hello@sgchamber.co.uk. St Glastonbury, chamber.co.uk.
Co.uk, okay, thank you for that. So there's no, no update on town deal, we've got a board meeting on Friday, don't think there's anything from LCN. Okay. councillor Roney Dougal?
Yes, I'll update on what's happening down Bride's Mound, is that the nature reserve, the wetland scrapes will be happening August, September. So that means that the fields, the fen zone by the river have got woodland already planted. We've started wild flower meadow, and now the wetland areas, the scrapes are about to happen. And the building has actually finally, after six years of bureaucracy, started happening.
Fantastic.
And the roundhouse is being built. The disabled paths for access for disabled people up at the top of the mound, they are in place now. So we're looking, fingers crossed, October, November, it might all be done.
Well done.
And hopefully all within budget.
Perfect, thank you.
The Robert Richards initiative have paid for the paths.
Okay.
And they are going to be paying for the solar panels and the other eco aspects.
Okay. Thank you very much indeed, that's great to hear. councillor Napper?
Thank you, your worship. Just going on from that, it's one for, I think it's councillor Cousins, actually. The mill stream is so overgrown, it's unbelievable.
Yes, I saw it.
And I believe that some of the complaints of this, the flooding in America where four, I don't know, nearly 100 people lost their lives, I think, was down to non-maintenance of, of water channels.
Yeah.
Now, if, if you go down to Dyce House Lane, you'll see that, that, that water course is absolutely full up with reeds and everything else. And you can nearly walk, walk across the darn thing. So I, I'm just, because I know councillor Cousins is on that area, and I just hope that he will go back and tell them how concerned we are about the, the condition of that water course.
Thank you. councillor Manning?
My understanding is that the condition of that water course, although, yes, the reeds are growing, the real problem is there's no water in it.
Yeah. Now, I looked the other day, just by snows.
There's a blockage at Clyse Hole.
Yeah.
Which basically needs to be unblocked, and if that happens, then water will flow again.
Okay, thank you.
It does flow, but, and there's a lot of fish there.
Yeah.
It's awful.
Okay. councillor Cousins?
Your worship, I shall report that back to the internal drainage board. I'm unsure of the status of, of that, the mill stream, or who are the repairian owners of the land which it runs through, because they would be the people who would have the duty to make sure that it's cleared. No? Okay, well, I'll go and talk to them about it.
Don't give me more work to do, please.
I, I shall, I shall report it back. I just want to say that, speaking of the drainage board, we met on 16th of June, and we heard about a new second reservoir that's going to be created, a cheddar.
Wow.
It's a massive reservoir, constructed by 2035, 3 million litres per day it will be capable of. And it will also be an offset transfer system so that water will be accessible in the Tiverton area too. How strange is that? So it will enable new water to be available across the south west, so it's drinking water, which is quite good. The other thing is that the, due to the risk for the environment to stopping maintenance work, the Drainage Board Consortium has been awarded a grant to undertake main river maintenance on the most vulnerable areas through public sector cooperation agreements. And whilst we won't be able to tackle all of the main water that needs to be done, at least that's better than nothing at all. But this is still an area that concerns me. It's all very well, a straining internally, but if the water can't get out to the river system or the main system, then we're going to be flooded.
Thank you. councillor Don Francesco, then councillor Napper?
Thank you, yeah, it's just about Clyse Hole again. So I did actually speak to Ian Tucker because he has, well, the Bailey's project has the mill stream, I spoke to him about it, and he was saying, yes, the problem is further up, it is at Clyse Hole. Now, that piece of land was actually part of the bundle, if you like, that was sold when Bride's Farm got the land, so it's the same, so it is actually that, and I will let them know.
Okay. councillor Napper?
Thank you, your worship. Going on from the Bristol Water Reservoir, when I was on the county council many years ago, we, Bristol Water put in, to have a new reservoir put in there. And I'm afraid Offwat, in their great, wonderful thoughts, said it wasn't needed. So if, if Offwat had have kept their nose out, we would have had a new reservoir there already. And I'm afraid Offwat stopped it and said that they can, they can stop the water going by, by stopping the leaks. Yes, I agree about the leaks, but certainly Offwat messed up there big time.
Thank you. councillor Cousins tried to reply and then councillor...
Very briefly, you're quite right, this was first proposed in 2014, but thankfully now it will be constructed.
Thank you. councillor Cook?
It's not a problem at all, but it's just never known, really. But the, when Orleans had tour leisure fields, they put a culvert in from the road, you know, from road drainage. I'm pretty sure, and I'm actually, but we run up on the road, goes down there into a holling pan, and then back out through this culvert, which is as you enter the fields, on the right hand side, it goes all the way down and then across the fields to the poplars and then down past the housing estate down the bottom. And that culvert, you can only see it from, you get down.
Yes.
It's always there, and also the hollers will get down there and only see it. But I've been down there myself, and it's, I would say it was, say, oh, probably 10, 20 years ago, nearly, it was about a third blocked solid with silt. Just washes all this all down. And so that's pretty soon going to be creating a problem, certainly for the health.
Yeah. I, I, I think they need to look at.
There, isn't it? It's at the top, so it's going to be the roads and what have you.
Thank you.
It needs clearing.
councillor Napper, then councillor...
Yeah, that, all the water, I think, from tour, tour leisure will go in, in, in a culvert, I think there's three underneath the road, into, into the, the, the big pond there, which was dug, and then that in turn goes into the, goes into the mill stream, right opposite the buddy van. But that very often gets blocked up. And I, I've had a lot of complaints, one of, from people, residents in the mill stream estate, that everything was blocked up and, and they had a lot of water, a lot of water lying around. So, yeah, perhaps we ought to go to the local authority and ask them to, to make sure that that, those culverts are unblocked.
Thank you. councillor Henderson, the councillor?
I remember discussing the various culverts and reeds down at Tour Leisure with Fusion a while back, and I think the problem is a lot of them are kind of the responsibility of different people. I think one is Wessex Water, one next to the mill stream estate is actually responsible of the developer who built that estate, who obviously, once they finished the estate, just washed their hands of all the responsibilities and don't do anything about it. And I think some were actually tours responsibility. So I think it's a case of going down there and saying, well, this is your piece, sort that out, and this is your piece, you sort that out. But I agree, it is a nightmare down there.
Thank you. Right, that leads neatly on to my announcements, and one of them is the Wedmore Parish Council meeting, so the SRA thing is tomorrow. Wedmore Parish Council, seven o'clock, for those who wanted to go. So that was the one that by email had the date wrong, so for the Thursday, do you remember that? I think you asked about it, didn't you? So that's tomorrow. Bill Smart emailed, and so whoever's going to go at seven o'clock at Wedmore Parish Council. So that's the talk about the sort of, the brew, the, the water management of the catchment, essentially. So all of these things are sort of relevant. St John's Church, so this is just early diary notice, the new vicar, who is the Reverend Alice Watson, will be installed on Thursday, the 18th of September at seven. We will get a formal invitation nearer the time, but David Smith, the warden, just said it will, will be the bishop coming to essentially present her to the congregation of St John's. Who are the dates again? Thursday, the 18th of September at 7pm. Were you on the interview board for that? Yeah, thank you. We had a letter from St Dunson's School from a student, and it was remarkable. I, I forwarded it to the town clerk, and she gave a very detailed, two-page assessment of what was wrong with the town, antisocial behaviour, roads, speeding, people ignoring the speed limits and all of this. So following my initial email, the town clerk wrote to Mrs Watson, who's the deputy head for student development and safeguarding, and said, please ask this girl if she would be interested in joining our youth council. And I just thought, thank you, that was remarkable.
As well as answering the other points in her letter, your worship.
Yes, thank you. Which I did as well, said what we were already doing and what we couldn't. The other one, and it sort of cross links into item 20, so please, the quarterly newsletter that we've agreed to put out at Lammers, so early August, please do write articles for it. So the town clerk has a template for it. I'm going to do a basic introduction and about reporting crimes and sort of antisocial behaviour, so 101, 999, Crime Stoppers, et cetera. Sarah Marks, I think, will do something about in bloom, because we'll have had the judging, so the judging is next week?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. Sarah Marks, so those who are on the services committee, sorry, Sarah Hallam will do something about the charter market that we've taken back on, so 1189 Charter Market, and she will also do something for allotments. I've asked councillor Smyer to do something on footballs or Glastonbury Way, he's on holiday, but if anybody else has articles, they can be just short things. So the idea is to tell our community what we're actually doing, rather than all the misinformation that sort of keeps coming our way. And it could be backed up with loads of notes of photos, so just really nice stuff. Yeah. councillor Lockman.
I'm wondering if one of us is already doing something on world heritage, and if not, we should do.
Okay.
Don't know.
I'd be happy to, but this may have stronger use.
Sorry, missed that.
Is one of us doing something on world heritage? If not, I'd be happy to.
No threat.
Yeah.
That's one of the...
Hot topics.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah. councillor Cousins?
Very happy to help you with that, councillor Lockman.
Okay, thank you. When would we need to have sort of text ideas into you?
I would say end of next week, please. It's going to go out very early August.
Yeah.
Because I need to get it all designed and, I need to get it all designed and work out its layout, so the end of next week, please.
Okay. Thank you. And I think that's it for me. Yeah. And, and, oh, I, I know one thing. The Finance and General Purposes Committee, which is this Thursday, standing orders say the deputy mayor is the chair, she is on holiday overseas, visiting family. So we will need to elect a deputy chair, and that person will chair Thursday's meeting. Now, if you've seen the agenda downstairs, there's 13 or 14 grant applications wanting almost £40,000 from our budget of £20,000 that we split over the July and December meetings. So hopefully councillors will have a look at those, come up with some ideas about what, how, who to do it. councillor Roney Dougal, then councillor Cousins?
My heart council emails aren't working. Connor, could you please send the Finance and General Purposes and all the grant applications to my private email?
I did that when we were looking at your computer earlier, and I'm just going to do that for councillor Cousins right now.
Thank you, perfect. councillor Cousins?
Thank you. I'll have to give my apologies for the meeting on Thursday, I'm working then.
Okay, thank you.
I shan't do that then.
Yeah. But, but yeah, I, I look through these things, oh goodness, you know, like, like some of it...
If, if the, the grant awarding criteria is also contained in the link, so if you could review the grant applications in advance of the meeting and read the grant awarding criteria and policy, that will shorten that part of the meeting quite considerably because there are... quite considerably, because there are a lot of applications. So please do as much work in advance of the meeting as you can to make the meeting not be quite as long, because there are some other, with it being the finance meeting, there are other very important things to consider that evening. And I don't, I don't think anyone wants to be here all night.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Correspondence, communications and announcements.
The only thing I was going to raise, your worship, you've already spoken to, was the letter from a pupil at St Dunstan School, which has been yourself replied, and I took the liberty of also replying and giving a detailed response. So hope potentially that that very engaged young person will want to be part of our future youth council. So I've asked if that pupil is interested for the deputy head to get in touch with, Katie, who's leading on that youth council. They may already be interested in that process and be engaged in it, but I don't know any of the young people's names. So I just wanted them to be aware that that's an opportunity for them to get involved.
I did offer to go over to the school as well and talk with them. councillor Cook.
Thank you, my honour.
Yeah, just two items which are, first one is an LV gentleman asked me to say something about the pedestrian crossing from Morrison's car park into their garage.
Yes.
Okay. And so I've taken a picture of it. He said he nearly got run over with a car switching down from street road, turning a corner and just going, carrying straight on. So he wasn't going into the garage. But, so having a look, it's the first time I've noticed it, really, because I'm not really driving a lot at the minute. But I did take a picture of it, and I was quite, I thought, oh, wow, yeah, you can't even see it.
Yeah.
Off of the car park, onto it, and then you've got one, maybe two, and they're all really scratchy. And then there's nothing.
No. I reported that to the, one of the deputy managers at Morrison's. They said we have to send it to estate. But I agree, like, because I walk across there every day, it's disappeared. There's the two signs saying pedestrian crossing, and people just like speed out and speed in.
I did say to, don't go there again.
Oh, sorry, sorry, two other ones?
Yeah, sorry. Now, the other one is Fishers Hill, we had a little pop into Fishers Hill for the first time for a while. And I met a lady there who's one of the volunteers there, the current volunteers, because all the others have gone.
Yes.
Yeah. So they've got four volunteers at the minute up there, and they're, they can't really handle it, that's the first thing. And so I asked them, is the water on? And because I tried it, because I'm sure there's some that's supposed to come out of the drinking fountain there.
No, 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 it doesn't go there.
Down, so they're going down the bottom there.
Yeah.
And carrying buckets up.
Yeah. No, no, that drinking fountain was decorative, it wasn't a connected one. And so the standpipe comes off the road, off the Butley Road, I think.
So where, yeah, but where's the access to it?
Near the gate.
To turn the water up there, right down the bottom of the hill and drag it up in, you know.
You used to have to go get the water from across the road, councillor Cook, so it's a significant improvement on what used to happen. So the reason the standpipe is sighted there is because that's where Bristol Water wanted the standpipe to be situated. So, yes, they have to walk down that piece of land to collect the water, but it's a significant improvement that they have water on that land. The town council spent a lot of money to put the standpipe there, and there are, there are a lot of, well, I had received reports that it had been.
Paid or something.
I had received reports of that, but our staff who went up and tested it, it was, it was working, so.
All right, well, she said, this was just two days ago, she said that it's, well, that they have to go down, all the way down.
Yeah.
That's all, so I don't, you know, I don't know where it is or what it has. But they are concerned that, about volunteers now.
Yeah.
And also, you know, that's good, well, don't you have a lease, you know, that you can get more people? No, nothing.
There was a memorandum of understanding, but I don't know who's involved, involved with that piece of land anymore, so.
They haven't got a lease.
No, they wouldn't have had a lease, no, we're not able to lease that piece of land. It's left in trust to the, to the town in perpetuity. There was a memorandum of understanding with the town council, how that group of volunteers was going to essentially manage that piece of land, because that was their wish. That was something that the mayor at the time, councillor Lockabandu, was very involved in. I don't know what volunteers are left for that piece of land. I haven't been, I haven't been informed that they don't want to have those responsibilities anymore. I do know our staff have gone and cut the trees, which was, which was generally not something that group wanted to do, but it got into a state where we had to go and cut the grass.
Yeah.
So I think I shall have to somehow work out what is or isn't happening on that piece of land and bring it to the property and assets committee what we want to do with it.
Yeah.
A lot.
Put it back to grass as it always was, if we can't, if there aren't volunteers who want to manage it, or our volunteer is going to continue to look after it, so.
The other thing, she was, I did say, I did ask this particular one, is I thought you were growing food though for the community. And we can barely feed ourselves now.
Okay.
So, because it is absolutely solid and everything, but, you know, they are trying. I mean, it's still alive.
Yeah.
But, you know.
Okay.
It's not looking very good.
Yeah. Thank you. councillor, councillor Napa.
Thank you, your worship. I know this is a green council, but do you think that we could recognise Lando Norris in his achievements? He may become world champion in some, in the future, I don't know. But I don't think that, that we've sort of promoted him in any way. And I think that he could, he could promote Glastonbury in quite a good way as well. So I just wonder whether we can adopt him or do something to, for, to the good of both of us.
Win the British Grand Prix on Sunday.
Thank you. What was his name?
Lando Norris.
I believe he spent some time at Millfield.
Yeah.
Kind of doesn't count then.
Not necessarily a direct relationship to Glastonbury, but I believe here.
Yeah, well, that's street, but.
That we'd have.
councillor Napa.
You look free, you look free against them.
His father had it.
I guess, I'm just saying, anyway.
My thought, I think it's a lovely idea, but he's only won one race, I think, you know, if he becomes the world champion.
Thank you. Yeah.
Then that's a different story.
Okay, so perhaps we should nominate Shugart as well. Yes, thank you. councillor Henderson.
I'm not sure if this is the right agenda, I just brought this up with Liz Lashon on Saturday evening. Bristol City Council are making a big deal about tackling their traveller problem. They're supposedly putting a new policy together, and as the MP for Bristol is Darren Jones, who's quite high-profile member of Keir Starmer's cabinet, he is back in Bristol involving himself with this policy. Now then, we per capita have a bigger problem than Bristol, and I just wondered if there's any mileage in getting in touch with Bristol City Council, Connor, and seeing if, A, we can either work together or if there's anything that they put forward that maybe we, because I mean, you know, DJ comes and talks to us here nearly every month, he talked to myself and councillor Much outside the town hall last month. You know, it is something that we've been dealing with for forever. It's not going away, but I just wondered if working with Bristol City Council might help or not.
councillor Lockabandu, then councillor Cousins.
I think we're still on course announcements. We've got two suggested announcements. One is on Saturday, we had our ceremony making Jay in a free run of the Glastonbury, worth announcing. The other is at a Glastonbury in Bloom meeting last night, Connor has produced a very beautiful portfolio.
Portfolio, yes.
Opening around town, which I think deserves to be much better known than just the South West and Bloom judges.
Yeah. Okay, that would be a nice one in our quarterly newsletter, mightn't it?
And Jane as well.
Yeah, that's a, that's a very good point about Jane Chawney. It would, it would take the newsletter from probably two pages to 32, because the portfolio is 30 pages long. However, I can put the portfolio on the website.
Yeah.
And include a link to it and promote it via our website and social media, because it does. So the purpose of the portfolio is to highlight everything that the judges won't see on judging day. And it does highlight quite a lot of the work that volunteers and local people do for, toward Glastonbury and Bloom and toward what is, you know, the town's entry that the town council gets a lot of credit for. But actually, a lot of the work is done by volunteers and people in the community and different community gardens and the different businesses, et cetera. So I'll certainly put that on the website now.
Thank you.
I'm very pleased you thought the portfolio was of high quality, fingers crossed. I think fourth year lucky, I might win best portfolio and stuff.
Wow.
I've been robbed for the last three.
Oh, don't worry. councillor Cousins and councillor Don Francesco.
Thank you very much. Just to say that there are other MPs in Bristol as well as that.
Ah.
They're not in the cabinet?
No, sadly not. I'm so relieved to see the budget monitoring report this month, after reading, and I know I shouldn't, but after reading one of the incredible Facebook posts about this council saying that we were bankrupt and lots of people believing that we were bankrupt.
Wow.
So the budget monitor brought, and perhaps the members of the press watching this might be able to allay fears that this council is not bankrupt. May I repeat that again? The Glastonbury Town Council is not bankrupt.
Thank you, thank you. councillor Don Francesco.
Other items of news release? We're still on that or not? So yes, the community review, if we could do a link to it, is this an actual paper or is this online?
The commute.
Newsletter, but also, sorry, it's for the, yeah, if we could put that out as a news item, that we've adopted the community review. And also maybe about the Step and Ride, Step Ride and Thrive project with councillor Henderson being the point on that.
Okay. councillor Much, green walls, no doubt.
No, no, I was just, with regard to what councillor Napa was recommending about the Formula One chat, there is a commitment by Formula One, just learned this year, to convert to sustainable fuels by 2026.
Excellent.
They've already, they've already.
Thank you. Okay.
They already said that they're not going to do that, I think that lasts about 10 minutes.
Okay. To review actions arising from this.
It was a nice thought.
From this meeting with your multi-coloured head.
Yes, thank you, your worship. I'm going to contact Sarah Dyke MP about St Dunstan's House and invite her for another visit, her to raise the profile of that fantastic project. You've adopted the community review, and councillor Don Francesco has just suggested.
Clarity, that we are a great example of a hub. I think the word hub would be a good word for her to use.
Because hub obviously has its different sort of meaning.
Okay.
I don't know, hub, councillor Cousins says hub.
Many times.
We've adopted the community review, and councillor Don Francesco has suggested that that be an item of news release and available on the website, which can be done. Item number 11, councillor Henderson has been nominated as the.
Step Ride and Thrive.
Step Ride and Thrive project, so I will put him in touch with people leading the project, and councillor Henderson can bring back updates in the future. We've adopted the new complaints policy, so I will get that added to the website.
Is it possible to write to the unitary councillors and ask them for reports or updates?
You feel free to, your worship, yes, if you would like to as the first citizen of Glastonbury.
Thank you.
Please do.
Thank you.
I've noted, as well as in previous meetings, which I will view, quarterly newsletter items from yourself, your worship, antisocial behaviour, the staff on various topics, councillor Smythe footpaths, councillors Lockabandu and Cousins are going to talk about, are going to do a piece about our world heritage scoping exercise. And I did overhear, I wonder, councillor Rony Dougal, did you want to give an update on Bride's Mound when we were talking about that for the newsletter?
Yes, I was talking with Indra, and we will definitely get an update on the round.
Okay. Can have those the end of next week, please.
On the other hand, at our, at our meeting, the comms people decided not to put anything out just yet until we're a little bit further forward. So I just need to double check with John and Bob Croft about that.
Sentence most, it's not concrete.
We will release news items about the very successful Freedom Ceremony for Jane Chawney. And I'll add the Glastonbury and Bloom portfolio to the website.
Thank you.
Actually, actions, your worship.
Thank you. And the date of the next meeting is the 12th of August, and I declare this meeting closed. And thank you very much indeed.